Good evening and welcome to the October 14th, 2014 work session of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Tracy Philbeck and I serve as Chairman of the Board as well as Commissioner for the Dallas Township. I'd like to welcome our viewers and thank Time Warner Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens. For television audience, I'd like to present to you your Gaston County Commissioners, beginning on my right.
Alan Fraley, Chair of Township.
Good evening Chad Brown, Riverbend Township.
Good evening Nicky Price, South Point Township.
Good evening Jason Williams, Gastonia Township.
And good evening Joe Carpenter.
Crowder Mountain Township.
Good evening Tom Keger, Gastonia Township.
Thank you gentlemen. Our first item is Proclamations, Commendations, Awards and Certificates. First up is Commissioner Carpenter, proclamation for Far Yarn's 75th Anniversary. Commissioner Carpenter.
We have a family here, part of the family. Will you all come up and join? All of you. Come on over. Just hang around. Hey. This is a, this is a very special time in the life of Gaston County. And I really congratulate the family on the leadership that you've given to our community. And let me, let me read and present you with this proclamation.
Hold on Mr. Commissioner Carpenter, is the mic on? There we go.
Can you hear it now?
We hear it now.
Okay, thank you. Whereas Far Yarns was founded by Robert L. Stowe Senior, Daniel J. Stowe, and William J. Farr in 1939, I was three years old, through the purchase of the assets of McAden Mills in the town of McAdenville, Gaston County, North Carolina. And whereas William J. Farr built and led Far Yarns for over 40 years, providing thousands of jobs to Gaston County residents while developing the town of McAdenville into a great place to live, work, and worship. Whereas J.M. Kostarfen III then led Far Yarns for over 30 years, some of which being the most tumultuous economic times in the textile industry, to become one of the most diversified sales yarn manufacturers in the world, recognized by its innovation, quality, and responsiveness. And whereas Far Yarns was made significant investment, has made significant investment in its Gaston County operations with more than $60 million in high-tech fiber extrusion operation and state-of-the-art yarn spinning, twisting, and heat setting equipment added just within the past eight years. And whereas Far Yarns continues to invest in McAdenville and Gaston County community and well-being of its employees and community members with recreational opportunities through land preservation, the South Fork River Blue Way, the Carolina Threads Trail, and YMCA there in McAdenville. Whereas Far Yarns, nearly their thousand Gaston County-based employees have embodied the American spirit of hard work, dedication, and community services to be one of the most successful textile companies in the nation. And whereas Far Yarns has for nearly 60 years generously shared the joy of Christmas with nearly 600,000 visitors annually to McAdenville Christmas Town, USA, Lights Display, now recognized nationally as well as internationally, delighting the children of all ages. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners congratulates and commends Far Yarns LLC for their many contributions to Gaston County and hereby recognizes October 18th, 2014 as a day of celebration in honor of their 75th anniversary to be adopted the 28th day of October, 2014. And again, congratulations.
Joe, thank you.
Thank you. And I know you would like to speak and tell us something about this great event that's going to come up this Saturday.
Thank you Joe. I'm Bill Kostarfen. I'd like to introduce the folks that are here with me, my wife, my wife Carol, Kristi Glidden, who just came with Farr three weeks ago. Many of you know Mel Collins, our Director of Human Resources. Kristi is our new Director of Human Resources. She and her husband are two brand-new residents of Gaston County. They've moved here from Burlington. And Fred Erickson is our Chief Financial Officer. And this is quite an honor for us. We feel very fortunate to be here for 75 years, especially in the textile industry. We have had to reinvent ourselves several times over the last 15 or 20 years to still be here. We've invested a lot in the business, but you all have been right there with us and have given us a lot of support in the new investment that we've made. And I really appreciate that and wanted to thank, thank you all. We have a big day on Saturday and we've invited you all to be there and we hope, we hope you can make it and look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is a proclamation from Commissioner Keeger, Long Term Care Residents Rights Month. And then there'll be a commendation from Mr. Keith Moon, former DSS Director. Commissioner Keeger. Cindy, you want to come up please?
Let's see her out there. Okay. Well, I'm going to go ahead and read it nonetheless. This is to recognize Long Term Care Residents Rights Month. Chairman Philbeck and myself helped them celebrate their annual party, I guess about a week and a half or so ago. And it was a Western-themed party and Mr. Philbeck and I attended appropriately in our summer shorts and t-shirts and didn't know it was a cowboy festival.
We did have cowboy hats.
We did have hats. Whereas there are more than 1,000, 1.6 million individuals living in 16,000 nursing homes, 1 million individuals living in 50,000 board and care assisted living facilities in the U.S. And whereas the Federal Nursing Home Reform Act of 1987 guarantees residents their individual rights in order to promote and maintain their dignity and autonomy. And whereas all residents should be aware of their rights so they may be empowered to live with dignity and self-determination. And whereas we wish to honor and celebrate these citizens, to recognize their rich individuality, and to reaffirm their right to vote and participate politically, including the right to have a say in their own care. And whereas individuals and groups across the country will be celebrating Residents Rights Month with the theme Better Staffing, The Key to Better Care, to emphasize the importance of affirming these rights through facility practices, public policy, and resident-centered decision-making. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners proclaims the month of October as Long Term Care Residents Rights Month. Here in Gaston County, encourage all citizens to join them in these important observances. And this too will be adopted later in the month on the 28th. And I'm going to turn that back over to our clerk. And at this time, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, I'd like to invite Mr. Keith Moon to the podium along with Mr. Chris Dobbins. I think in one point he was his coworker, then his supervisor. Come on up here Chris. Good evening. Oh, you've got some other folks with you. All right, good. Just a real brief comment. It was almost 13 years ago, I was on that Social Service Board back then when we had a turnaround at the Director's Office at DSS. And I was happy to be one of the four Board Members that did the search and wound up hiring Mr. Moon. And I'm real grateful for him for the job he did as Director. And with that said, I will get to the resolution, Mr. Moon. Whereas Mr. Keith Allen Moon was employed as the Gaston County Department of Social Services Director on January 8th, 2001. And whereas Mr. Moon subsequently became the Division Director of Social Services after the consolidation of the Department of Social Services and the Health Department on July 1, 2013. And whereas Mr. Moon provided superb leadership and oversight of the department's 382 personnel while managing a $45 million operations budget and ensuring the provision of quality services to the citizens of Gaston County. Mr. Moon's distinctive accomplishments include serving on the North Carolina Division of Social Services Work Support Strategies as co-chair, the Workforce Development Board, and the Gaston County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. And whereas Mr. Moon's commitment and dedication reflect his outstanding character and compassion for those less fortunate in our community. His integrity, professionalism, honesty, and loyalty are without parallel. And whereas Mr. Moon has served Gaston County well and has always worked on behalf of the county's best interests. And whereas Mr. Moon is a friend to all and despite his, well, they wrote it, goofy limericks, we will be, he will be missed by his fellow employees. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners expresses its deepest appreciation to Keith Moon for his years of dedicated service to the citizens of Gaston County and extends his best wishes to him for continued health and reward during his retirement years. And this too will be adopted on the 28th day of October.
And of course, I'm going to invite you to say something in a second, but first I thought it might be appropriate if Mr. Dobbins said something.
All right. Thank you sir. You know someone's really enjoying retirement when the first words out of their mouth are, this is the third time I've wore pants and a tie since I've been retired. One for a funeral, one for a wedding, and one for tonight. The other way you know someone's really enjoying their retirement, the first thing they show you are pictures of their grandchildren. So it is apparent that Mr. Moon, as everyone affectionately calls him and refers to him, is enjoying his days in retirement. I for one am eternally grateful for the support and guidance and wisdom that he provided, both myself and the agency as a whole during our transition into consolidation. I will, for a lifetime, call him a friend. I look forward to the day where I can talk about the number of times I've worn a tie in a six-month span. And I'll always look forward to showing pictures of my grandchildren. So Keith, thank you for all you've done.
Thank you Chris.
Thank you both. And Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, I thank you for the commendation and thank you for all the support during the years I've been here. I am happily retired right now after 46 years of doing this. I started in the summer of 1968 and during that time, knock on wood, I haven't had more than a weekend between jobs. So it's, I'm enjoying the break that I'm taking right now. Still plan to be active and supportive of the community wherever I can be and plan to stay here for the foreseeable future. Do want to thank not only all of you and Mr. Keeger for his service on our Board, but for all the senior managers of the department who are, who are with us here tonight. These are some wonderful people. We have, we have really, really highly competent people in the Social Services Division and in the new Department of Health and Human Services and, and I know they can count on your support as the years go on. So thank you very much.
This time Commissioner Brown and myself will be giving a commendation to the Dallas-Dixie Youth AU Coach Pitch All-Stars.
Well, I guess I will tell the state champions to please step to the podium. Come on guys, bring your families, bring everybody. One of the joys for me this year that I got to see this happen, so it was something that was really special. And so proud of you guys and your coaches and the parents for the dedication that it takes to put forth, getting to travel and do the things that your kids want to do.
Make sure you got, they can't see, there you go. Make sure you get on TV.
Here, y'all come around front here. Just come right up in the front. That way you get it. Parents, you can come over there in front, everybody can see you. There you go. Whereas the AU Dallas AA Dixie Youth All-Stars won the state title at the North Carolina Dixie Youth Baseball AA State Championship Tournament held for the second year at Harper Park in Stanley, North Carolina on July 4th through the 7th, 2014. And whereas the Dallas All-Stars entered the state tournament as district champions, sweeping through the tournament play undefeated to claim the state title in the best-of-three series against Youngsville. And whereas the championship series opener came down to the wire with Dallas trailing by one, down to their last out. Braden Mayers walk off, two runs, single, scored Ashton Pope and Kayden Zolo, scoring 4-3 victory. And whereas Dallas handily defeated Youngsville in a game two with the final out recorded by Campbell Pierce, stealing a 4-2 victory and a clinching state championship. And whereas the Dallas All-Stars went on to proudly represent North Carolina in the Dixie Youth Baseball AA World Series in Texarkana, Arkansas, July 17th through the 21st, 2014. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioner commends the Dallas Dixie AU AA Coach Pitch All-Stars, namely Cameron Klein, A.J. Davis, Tripp Dow, Chase Gant, Kayden Chromus, Corey Long, Braden Mayers, Campbell Pierce, Ashton Pope, Riley Styles, Sidney Walls, and Camden Zolo. Coaches Wesley Styles, Freddie Dow, Scott Pope, Shelby Pierce, and Ryan Gant and his families, who are the parents. And congratulates them for the successful season upon winning the 2014 Eight and Under AA Dixie Youth Baseball North Carolina State Championship and earning a trip to the 2014 Dixie Youth AA World Series in Texarkana, Arkansas, to be adopted the 28th day of October, 2014. Congratulations guys. Where you going? Look over here. If you want to, you go over there by that little sign over there. All of you go by that sign. Hold on, I just want, coaches, I want to thank you. I want to let you say something because without you guys volunteering your time, these kids would certainly miss out on a lot of opportunities. But also I know the parents play a big role in that. So congratulations to you guys and thank you for your efforts and what you put forward. And hopefully we'll see some future major leaguers there.
First off, thank you guys for honoring these kids. It's been a pleasure. They gave up a lot of time and put in a lot of effort along with parents. And last thing, it was awful nice to do this and Chad's background of backyard in Stanley is pretty sweet, so I had to throw that jab in. But it was a well-run tournament and they represented the county, the state, very nicely in the state in the World Series. So hats off to you guys.
Any other coaches? Come up and get your picture taken with the commission, please. If you'll come around front, they'll get you and...
Who's talking with an iron?
Actually, they are.
Chad, come up front here. Go up there.
Be a book game with Tracy. Huh?
Hey guys, if you're a winner, just smile a little bit, okay? If you're a loser, just be proud of yourself.
Everybody get straight, put your right knee. Five, four, three, two, one. All right, good job.
for the Gaston County Commissioners to honor citizens who have unselfishly given of their time, talent, skills, and energies in service as an appointee to one of our boards and commissions. This type of service is the foundation for citizen involvement in our county government and has helped shape the future of our county. We gratefully acknowledge the work of the following individuals and certificates of appreciation have been forwarded to them. Mr. Frank Matthews, Economic Development Commission. Mr. Phil Welch, SARA Local Planning Committee. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Carpenter. Our next item is citizen recognition. We have Mr. Bill Starnes signed up for Concerned Bikers Association. If you'll please come forward. Also, I'll inform the Board, he's going to be given an award tonight. We didn't have time to put it on the agenda, so I'd asked him would he do it under citizens' comments. But if you would, please state your name and address for the record and you can begin.
Yes sir, my name's Bill Starnes. I'm a State Legislative Director, CBA Beta, North Carolina. I live in Mount Holly, 5205 Clearwater Lake Road. The Concerned Bikers Association is primarily a legislative organization. We're grassroots politics. We fight for the rights and freedoms of bikers and motorcyclists and we also strive for their safety. Not only are we very active legislatively, but we have a motorcycle safety awareness program that we teach in our driver's ed classes to the students in high schools all across the state. And a lot of what we do goes unnoticed in the motorcycle community. And by the same token, a lot of what you folks do doesn't make the front pages of the paper. A lot of what our law enforcement community does doesn't make the front page of the paper. Unless somebody does something bad, there we are, you know, right on the front page. But a lot of the day-to-day just stuff that our elected officials in our public service perform for the citizens of Gaston County, North Carolina, go largely unnoticed. So tonight I talked with Alan Cloninger here a while back and asked him if he would recommend a deputy who would be worthy of an accommodation. And of course he turned that over to Assistant Chief Deputy David Sisk. And they went through the rank and file and they came up with what I believe is a very good candidate. Deputy Stillwell, are you here? And what I'd like to do is our motorcycle safety awareness program director, Robert Hamm is here with us tonight. I'd like him to read the reasons that we want to present this deputy with this award and present the award to her. This is Robert Hamm.
On July 9th, 2014, Deputy Julie Stillwell, excuse me, received a commendation from the office of the Sheriff's Office. The summary is on July 5th, 2014, Deputy Stillwell responded to an emergency medical call of an 11-month-old infant not breathing. Deputy Stillwell was the first person to arrive and immediately realized that the infant was choking and performed the Heimlich maneuver on him. The infant then started to cough and Deputy Stillwell removed a small yellow toy from his mouth. EMS then arrived and said the infant was breathing fine and transported him to the hospital to be checked out. Deputy Stillwell's quick response and actions definitely helped save this infant's life. Monica Dellinger, on August 28th, Assistant Principal from Costa Elementary School, wrote Sergeant Hamlin, first I want to commend Officer Stillwell with the Gaston County Sheriff's Office on her support and help in finding information regarding a kindergarten student. She was at Carr Elementary located in front of the school when one of our Costa Elementary kindergarten students was dropped off by his daycare. As soon as he arrived, he realized he was in the wrong place. After an hour of gathering information from this child who had limited English, did not know his daycare name, did not know his mom's name, did not what school he was supposed to go. All he knew the driver is Jennifer and all he knew he rode with a student named Hunter. Going through all of all the Carr's kindergartners to find Hunter, she and Mr. McGuire were able to contact us and she transported him to us. After ensuring he was safe and happy here in his kindergarten class and on his very first day at school, we proceeded to contact the daycare that was so neglectful in this situation. Carr had attempted to call the daycare but was not successful after leaving two messages. I was able to get through, spoke with the assistant director, and then allowed Officer Stillwell to do the same. All I can say is after the phone call, she is my hero. I love that you love all the children the exact same way we do. Thank you for using your time off to work in our schools. We appreciate all of your help and support. And we as CBA, we recommend that anybody that takes care of children, we're real, real heavy on that. And I'd like to commend her personally myself. Thank you Officer Stillwell.
Thank you all. It's truly an honor to accept this award. I love kids a lot, but I also would like to thank the sheriff for allowing us to work at the schools, to be able to be an impact on the children. So thank you so much.
And if, if you want to, you can, if you want to get together and get up here, you can get a picture.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, we appreciate you and the Board Members letting us be here tonight to do this. We appreciate it.
Thank you for what you did. If you want to come up here and you can get together and see, you can take a picture. We'll get a group picture. Our next item is Gaston County Sheriff's Office, 287G Steering Committee, 2014 Presentation. Mr. Jackson is the 287G Program Manager of Immigration Custom Enforcement and Mr. Alan Cloniger, Sheriff of Gaston County.
Start off proud of you Julie, you did a good job. You make me proud. This is the Steering Committee meeting that we're going to make a presentation to you about the 287G Program. Background, in 2007, the Gaston County Sheriff's ERO upholds those American immigration laws within our boundaries and borders through efficient enforcement and removal operations, in this case, through the 287G program. Currently, our priorities, current priorities are aliens who pose a danger to national security or public risk, recent illegal entrance, repeat violators of immigration law, and aliens who are fugitives or obstruct immigration controls. The Steering Committee mission statement, which is what we're doing now, is to improve the program oversight and direction, to identify issues and concerns regarding immigration enforcement activities, increase transparency, and offer community stakeholders, which is yourselves and the public, and communicate communi- community-level perspectives. The vision statement, that the, the vision of the Steering Committee is to create a safer, is to create safer communities, and improve national security by enhancing ICE's ability to identify and remove criminal aliens by gaining an independent community-level perspective on the 287G operations. And that's the primary reason I'm here this evening. As the sheriff said, they, Gaston County's been involved in this program since 2007. They have trained 20 deputies. They currently have seven deputies that are active. In 2013, they had three new deputies become 287G Designated Immigration Officers, and three of their deputies completed the add-on training since its inception. This is kinda hard to see, but these are the, uh, 2013 numbers for the Gaston County Sheriff's Office, uh, Level 1, Level 2, Level 3, and Non-Criminal. Level 1 being your serious offenders generally categorized as aggravated felons. Level 2 would be felons. Level 3 misdemeanors. And Non-Criminal is generally traffic offenses. Uh, this graph shows how many people were encountered, how many people they actually processed for removal, and a result of those processed, the number of people that were Uh, this chart shows your foreign-born to USC, uh, population ratio. The foreign-born, uh, is indicated by the red, and as you can see, that it is not a program that, uh, it, it doesn't target anyone. They just process who comes in their jail, and these numbers, uh, kinda show that. Uh, here are a few of the success stories for last year of just some of the people that the program has encountered, and were responsible for having removed from the United States. A citizen from Sierra Leone who was unlawfully here in the U.S., arrested and encountered by 287G, charged with, uh, breaking and entering a motor vehicle, two counts of felony larceny and felony conspiracy. Uh, there's also a citizen from Mexican who was here illegally, charged with trafficking methamphetamines, uh, possession with intent to distribute methamphetamines. Subsequently, he was convicted and sentenced to 25 to 24 months incarceration, processed and removed as a result of his convictions. That's the end of the presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Commissioner Price?
Yes, thank you for being here, and for your update. On the chart, the one that had the encounters on it?
Yes, sir.
Um, in Level 1, it had 18 encounters, processed removal 16, and removals were, uh, I guess, VR, what's that stand for?
It's removal or voluntary return.
Okay, so what happens to the one that's missing? What, is he still incarcerated, or?
Well, if you look-
He had 18 encounters, and 17 were removed, where's the other one? I mean, he just-
He, that person may have been here legally, or didn't have the convictions or the criminal history that made him removable from the U.S.
Okay, so he's back, back in the public?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions from the board?
I have one. Um, this may, may seem like a far-fetched question, but, uh, in light of recent events, uh, because mainly you're dealing with illegal aliens and things of that nature, um, do y'all check, uh, like if you have someone from West Africa, or something of that nature, um, in Gaston County that's illegal for Ebola, or anything of that nature? I mean, what, I mean, it, it, what do you do with that?
I'll let the sheriff answer that one.
Okay.
With the recent, uh, all the worry about Ebola and so forth, uh, everyone coming into the jail is first encountered when they come in by a medical technician to check them, to make sure that they're not in a emergency medical state that requires immediate attention. If they are, we require the officer to take them to the hospital. That way, the county doesn't incur the responsibility for that medical bill, 'cause once they're brought into the jail and committed to the jail, we have to pay that bill. So, at the interest of the jail, if we encountered someone, um, that was sick, severely sick, then they would be sent on to the hospital. We, uh, just recently, I, or recently, yesterday, I talked with, uh, Chris Dobbins about, um, our procedures, and we're gonna be reviewing everything that we do, plus, we're gonna be doing an update, not just as far as the Ebola, but just as far as, uh, any type of transmitted diseases and so forth, just to reinforce to our people in the jail and sheriff's office to be cautious, and to always follow the procedures there. So, if someone presented themselves and they were ill, and particularly with the way things are, and they were from West Africa, then I'm sure our medical will give them a very extra overlook. Is that-
Uh, one more question. This is mainly for the public. How many counties across state of North Carolina have a 287G program?
Currently, there are five.
Okay. Five.
Yes, sir. Mecklenburg, Gaston, Cabarrus, Henderson, and Wake.
Okay. I'd like to commend the Sheriff's Office. I think it's a wonderful program. It does a lot to protect our citizens, and also, you know, the actual immigration office itself. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Sheriff. Our next item is a Dallas Park presentation by Ms. Kathy Hart, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you for allowing me to come tonight. I wanna thank the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board members that are here, Cindy Eisenhower, DeeDee Gillis, Paul Outlaw, and the sheriff, so I'm sure he was gonna be here anyway.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief on this presentation. Um, this is something that, some of this material you saw last year when we came before you, to ask your permission to apply for a Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant. Um, I'm sure you all know that we were unsuccessful with that grant, and, um, our Parks Advisory Board's been discussing what would be our next steps, and they asked me to come before you tonight, and just to represent this to you, and, um, see what kinda support we could get as we move forward. Here you see just the Dallas Park, some of the assets for the park. Dallas is located one mile from Highway 321. It's 2.6 miles from I-85. It's centrally located in the county, has 90 acres, and we have some unique features there, including lakes, and equestrian village, I mean, sorry, equestrian facilities, and As part of the master plan process last year, uh, we outlined the existing facilities. A lot of you, I, all of you have been there before, you're familiar with these, but this just shows it here for your, for you to review. As part of the plan process, we, um, focused on some of our areas that were deficient, and one of the first things that came up were our existing athletic fields. Um, our layout for those fields are not really tournament-friendly. We have some ADA issues there, uh, parking issues. Our concession stand and restrooms need updating. And as we go farther, um, into the presentation, I'll just remind you that the park was built in the mid-'70s with federal money, so it's, it's, some of the areas have been updated, but a lot of it remains as it was constructed in the '70s. Our equestrian area, we're in the process of building a new restroom and concession building with some money that you gave us about a year ago, and those site improvements associated with that new building will allow us to have accessibility there. So, that's, that's gonna be a big plus for that area. Some other issues, we're a playground, we don't meet accessibility guidelines, uh, we have no shade on the playground. Walking trails, we've got one mile of existing trails, but that's something that's very much in demand. A lot of those trails need some renovation, and there are areas of the park that are underserved by the trails. Parking is a big issue there. Uh, we have difficulties parking at our ballfields, at our amphitheater, picnic area, and a lot of our facilities don't have parking within 200 feet. The county home, um, is, is an eyesore to most people. Um, some people, um, feel differently, but for most of us, it's, it's an eyesore. Uh, it was constructed in the early 1900s, it's been unoccupied for over 30 years. Uh, it's structurally sound, but there are some asbestos issues. So, last year, we had two public meetings to gather public input. Um, some of the most requested items for improvements were jogging and walking trails, adding a dog park, a splash pad, improvements to our athletic fields, and adding additional fields, and a new multipurpose building to replace the county home. So, with all that input, this master plan was developed, and you'll see that this plan incorporates all those requested issue, those requested areas, and, um, gives us a lot more friendly, um, ballfield layout there. And I'll move on, so you can see a close-up of the ballfield complex. The original plan called for two 320-foot fields, two 300-foot fields, but after we presented this, uh, we received some feedback from the commission, so on our next slide, you'll see an alternative plan, which just enlarges the fields a little bit, keeps the same amount of parking, which would be sufficient. And here are just some of the amenities that were requested to add with the ballfields, and, um, as we move forward, you'll see that those have been included in a, um, pricing. A warning track, a fan protection system for people who are viewing games, dugout covers, wind screens, and actually, this is more the, the covered seating areas. So, here, you'll see the total revised plan, uh, there's, with the emphasis there on the This plan also adds a multipurpose field, which is, um, one of the things that we're lacking in Gaston County. We, we can never provide enough soccer fields, and we don't have a dedicated soccer field at the Dallas Park, so this has been very much in demand. Also, on this drawing, you'll see that there's a new shade structure proposed for the playground, and a new parking lot, and a new restroom building that would serve that area of the This youth activity area, there's a spray ground here, a new playground, um, some volleyball courts. Um, this would just make a nice, uh, addition to our existing DOT pond there, make it much more friendly for people who are doing picnics, birthday parties, that sort of thing. The multipurpose building that would replace the county home, you see it here on this design. Uh, with that building, there would be a kitchen enclosed there, a little small park office, and an event lawn, and we would anticipate that being used for weddings, for corporate events, um, for Cotton Ginning Days. I know Mr. Philbeck was there this weekend. Um, our last band, we had rain, so we had to move them under a tent. That would be a great place for concerts, to have something like that at the park. You know, just improve the appearance as you go in the park. You wouldn't see a building that's fallen down from the 1900s. You'd see a nice, new building there, that we could really get some use out of. Here's just a detail of the multipurpose building. This plan also would add an additional one mile of trails, improve ADA accessibility, and add a fitness circuit to the park. Now, everybody's favorite, uh, the phasing strategy and the budget for this. Um, for the ballfield complex improvements, you're looking at $4,227,000. Phase 2, which includes the multipurpose field, the youth activity area, the dog park and trails, that's $1,733,000. And then the multipurpose field building, which would be Phase 3, as proposed here, $2 million. And this further breaks things down here for the Phase 1. And there are some alternative items you see on this slide. If we, um, did some enhancements to what you see there, added artificial turf is one enhancement. This is all à la carte, so you would add those if you decided to include those. Um, but everything is listed here for you, so you have a good breakdown of what it would cost. And before I ask, call for questions, DeeDee Gillis, our Vice Chair, wanted to say a few words, if that's okay.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. DeeDee Gillis, uh, Vice Chair of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I reside at 6127 Lewis Road, Gastonia, Crowder's Mountain Township. Um, I've sat on the board for quite a few years, and, uh, some of the guys have really taught me a lot, um, over the past years, and, uh, it's been fun. Uh, we've, we've made a lot of strides, we've made a lot of progress. Uh, you guys have been really dedicated to a, a lot of our causes. We really appreciate the restroom upgrades. Um, we hear feedback from citizens all the time, uh, primarily, I think, more from the North Belmont Park than anywhere, but, um, we get a lot of good feedback from our citizens. And, uh, you know, on the hills of Cotton Ginning, and, and walking around the Dallas Park, um, I'm kinda near and dear to the ADA part of this, uh, master plan. I, I'm the primary caregiver of my father, who is totally disabled, and, um, you know, I have to pick him up to do everything, uh, from wheelchair to bed to chair, to shower-
And then the multipurpose building, which would be phase three as proposed here, $2, 000,000. And this further breaks things down here for the phase one. And there are some alternative items you see on this slide. If we did some enhancements to what you see there, added artificial turf is one enhancement. This is all à la carte, so you would add those if you decided to include those. But everything is listed here for you, so you have a good breakdown of what it would cost. And before I ask, call for questions, DeeDee Gillis, our vice chair, wanted to say a few words, if that's okay.
Good evening Chairman and Commissioners. DeeDee Gillis, Vice Chair of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I reside at 6127 Lewis Road, Gastonia, the Crowder's Mountain Township. I've sat on the board for quite a few years and some of the guys have really taught me a lot over the past years and it's been fun. We've, we've made a lot of strides, we've made a lot of progress. You guys have been really dedicated to a lot of our causes. We really appreciate the restroom upgrades. We hear feedback from citizens all the time, primarily, I think, more from the North Belmont Park than anywhere, but we get a lot of good feedback from our citizens. And, you know, on the hills of Cotton Ginning and walking around the Dallas Park, I'm kind of near and dear to the ADA part of this master plan. I'm the primary caregiver of my father, who is totally disabled and, you know, I have to pick him up to do everything, from wheelchair to bed to chair, to shower, the whole nine yards. So I'm really excited about this. My dad loves going to Poston Park because he can get in his wheelchair and go all the way down to the pier and fish and then come back up when he wants to. And this is, this park, and we were at Cotton Ginning Days, and that's a prime example. You know, it's really hard if my dad would need to go to the restroom while we were there. You know, we've got to go all the way down to that one restroom, you know, where we just upgraded to, for him to use the restroom. There's no other facilities in that area for him to use. So for me, that's a big, it's a, it's a huge plus for us to move into the 21st century, if you will, for our citizens of Gaston County, many of whom are elderly and disabled. So I appreciate that portion of the master plan. But just a couple of things I'd like to point out as, from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, that we have heard a lot of concerns with regards to this master plan. One concern that we have as, as a board, and we brought this up well over, almost two years ago, was the condition of the county home. We got together as a board and decided that we needed to move forward, we needed to make some progress on the condition of the home. So what we did was, we contacted an architect, well, first of all, we contacted Historic Preservation Board, who met with us, we had a joint meeting, met with us, we gave them our concerns, and in turn, they replied with their thoughts. And, and I realize that, that's a historically significant building to a lot of people in this county. However, it's also a very dilapidated building and we have to keep that in mind. So one of the things that we decided was, we asked if it would be okay if we would invite an architect to come and look at the structure. We had an architect to, to do that, free of charge, and he is, this is one of the, his fields of specialty is historic structures. And he surveyed and inspected the entire home. And what we found at the time of the inspection was that the building is completely inundated with asbestos, from the old boiler system that's underneath the structure, to all the old plumbing lines and duct and the ceiling tiles and the mastic that's in the glazing and the windows. So there are a lot of asbestos in that particular building. We also found that a lot of the structure is dilapidated to the point that it just, it, it, you, you would have to demolish it, even if you wanted to repair it, you would have to demolish it to start all over. With that being said, we asked the Historic Preservation Board, who accompanied us, many of us who attended that inspection, and they were with us at that time, we asked them to come back to our board with a plan to go, to go make progress with this particular structure. They did come back to us and they presented a plan where they would like to incorporate the original structure, the original footprint of that building into the multipurpose facility that's in our master plan. We, as a Parks Board, do not feel that that would be financially feasible for the, the county to undertake such a project. At this particular time, the Historic Preservation Board, as well as our board, have found no grants or public funding for renovations to that magnitude. Those types of renovations would take, you know, donors, public benefactors, a, a lot of in-kind services from people who frankly just had a lot of money to give away. And I just don't know that, we know anybody like that. And apparently, the Historic Preservation Board at this time doesn't know anybody like that because it's been well over a year and there's been no further communication from that board to our board in regards to making progress on any plans with that structure. So with that being said, I, I wanted to kind of give you an update there to let you know that we're, we're not on an island all by ourselves with that. We have invited input from the particular folks to be able to move forward with the master plan because that is the proverbial elephant in the room when it comes to this particular plan and it can make a big difference. And one of the things that I'm particularly happy to see is, is that it does include a ball field complex. I know we get a lot of questions from a lot of our tournament and planning people who do these ball field, ball tournaments and such, and they were all very excited to see the plan and we're very excited to move forward with the plan. And we would appreciate your support, as always, and anything that you can offer us, we'll gladly accept. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Commissioner Price.
Thank you. On the, I guess, the master plan sheet, was there any discussion, or can the, the ball fields be used as soccer fields if they're not in use as ball fields?
It's possible, but it's not really a best practice to do that. And particularly with our ball season lasting March through November, there doesn't give a lot of opportunity for soccer play.
Yeah, I, since this ball thing has come up about buying land and everything, I have been informed that there is a need of soccer fields in the county. Parents are even having to go out of county to, to get their children playing time, so...
We accommodate a lot of soccer and with this plan, this mass, the, the soccer field here would, would accommodate a lot of teams because youth teams usually...
Was there any, are, are all three ponds necessary? What I'm getting at is, can we get rid of a pond and build soccer fields?
I think from your engineering costs, it may be expensive and some of our ponds have the large gas line that goes through them, so that would influence what's, what we're able to do there. But I, I wouldn't say no to that, Mr. Price. I just, we probably need to look into that more.
Okay. I'm just trying to, you know, I like your plan, I just wish there were more availability for some, for children playing soccer, not just concentrating on baseball. Whether we do away with a pond, I know the board is concerned about moving animal control out, so that would be some land that would be available.
There's also some land that may be available in the future adjacent to the Dallas Park, where you could use the existing infrastructure and, you know, possibly add more.
I guess, just since this came up, I have been inundated with, parents with, you know, can't you do something for soccer? And I just want to make the board aware that the city of Belmont has acquired some land down South Point Road off Gaither Road that they're looking to partner with anyone, especially the county, to develop that into a park, primarily for soccer play. So that's something for us to think about, but I do like your plan. I'm glad that you're, I appreciate the board taking the time to do it and I hope we can get something started and incorporate some soccer facilities somewhere in, in there. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. I think Commissioner Keeger was next.
Yeah, thanks guys for coming out. You know, we're not going to get into the dollars and cents of the master plan, I understand that, but there are a couple of things that I think we, we really need to put on the front burner. That, of course, is the, the disabilities issues. That's something we just need to get done. I don't think anybody would doubt that and I'm not going to say anything else about it. The other thing I want to talk about is, you know, where we live here, it gets mighty hot in the summertime. And to have a playground to invite little kids come out and there's no shade anywhere for parents or grandparents or even the kids to cool off, I think that's something that we need to address sooner than later. The last thing is, I would ask that the Parks Department find a way to see what the cost of removing that building, raising that building would be, just so we have that information in the future. Do you have it already?
With the phase three here, the, that includes cost of removing and, and building a new building. I, I can get you the breakout just for removing the building if you like, but the multipurpose building, $2,000,000.
No, no, no. What would it cost just to remove?
Just to remove it, okay. That's, that's a portion of that, I can get that to you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to echo what these guys said. I mean, this master plan is really, really nice. I, I can promise you, if, if my kids are watching, Philip McKenzie, Megan and Peyton are thrilled at this splash pad. I could just say it, they're, they're probably foaming at, at the mouth trying to figure out how soon we can get this thing going. They love the one Limeburger Park, it's always packed, so that, that's a big deal. The, the one thing that I would ask, maybe it's Commissioner Price's earlier question about the soccer fields, have we, you know, and, and we talked about, back, we talked about the Cadillac plans and the Prius plans with travel and tourism. This is really nice, this is really nice. Have we looked at the, I guess, the, the cost benefit analysis of spending that money, this amount of money, across the county, maybe developing soccer fields or athletic fields that maybe aren't quite this nice, but maybe getting more fields to accommodate the number of people that are playing? Or is this kind of what the Parks and Rec Board looked at and said, hey, we want to tackle this next?
Well, in our comprehensive master plan that we did back in 2007, one of our goals was to have a soccer complex. We very, very partially accomplished that when we were given the property for Pearl Henderson Park. We have two really nice soccer fields there. They're unlighted, which limits their use, but we, we were able to do that. But we have not yet found a piece of property where we could build a soccer complex. But that, that is one of our, our long-term goals, to do that. We have soccer fields at our 11 school parks. North Belmont Park, there are two fields there. We have a lot of soccer fields that are used and, and you go by the parks, you know they're used constantly. We could possibly get more use out of some of the fields, particularly at Poston, because those are game fields. We have two competitive soccer organizations in the county and they play their games there, their rec games and their more advanced players' games there. So we don't allow practice, but if we would look into some artificial turf, we could get, we could get Poston scheduled, you know, more. We could allow practice there in addition to our games. But that's, that's one way to do it without buying land.
I think that's the point I was, I was asking is, have we looked at maybe adding a few things here and there that, that don't cost as much money and maximize our assets that are already there? Would that not, in, in your guys' opinion, be the next step to say, okay, let's maximize what we have, since there's such a, a need and it's so in demand? I was just curious why this was seen as the next thing to tackle when, when there's a demand for the other things?
Well, this, this park is over 40 years old and it's, it's very heavily used and there are just a lot of issues there that, that need to be addressed. But that's not to say that the soccer is, that's, that's an issue as well. They all need to be addressed, I think.
Well, again, very well done. I was impressed with the, the master plan, looks really good and I'm, I'm excited for when we can get this done, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you Kathy for coming and presenting that. I think in, one of the things I wanted to say, you'll see in the next presentation, is something that will answer Commissioner Price, Commissioner Williams. It'll answer a lot of stagnant questions we've had throughout our county about what we can do. You hit the nail on the head. We have 11 high school fields that we could utilize more and I'll talk to you more about that when I get into the, is, my presentation is on baseball, but it is full circle for all activities because I think Gaston County Sports is getting ready to strike the map with the court and I look forward to that. But one of the things I wanted to say was, Commissioner Price's piece of that, we can accommodate different types of soccer through maybe just a, a different type of field configuration and all this will go through in the next presentation, but I want to tell you about that soccer is very prevalent in Gaston County. I think the, the standard is, you can only have two major events in one county per year that are big-time items and that's what I've been working on, trying to get a, a soccer presentation as long as a, a baseball presentation. So, but thank you so much for your master plan and what your board has done over there and I look forward to working with you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Carpenter?
Yeah, Kathy, a couple of things. First of all, how much equestrian activity do we have over there? Do they, they fairly regular?
We have four shows a year. Two of them are very large and use all of our barns, all, all of those. The other two are not quite that large. It's, it's definitely gone down. We used to have 10, 12 shows. We don't have any local providers doing shows anymore. They're all big, big shows, folks from out of Gaston County that come in and use our facilities.
Okay. Well, you know, I, I think those people fill up every hotel when they come, don't they?
They fill up a lot. They come in, yeah, they come in, you know, several days before and their horses stay with us, but they stay elsewhere.
If we had a covered arena, then, in that area, then you'd probably have more, wouldn't you?
I don't know, there's, some people tell me they don't like that because you don't, you would have a dirt arena because you can't grow grass under a cover. But then other people say, if you had a covered arena, something, you know, like they do in Asheville, it, you could attract bigger shows. So there's two schools of thought, I guess, just with, like everything else, but, yeah, that's been talked about a long time.
Do we do that, use that arena for other things?
We do, we do. We have a number of other things.
I know the Cotton Ginning Days, they did, dog show.
We have some private people who use it for like parties and events and concerts and other things.
Another thing, the, at, school properties, the new Kramer High School, it seems like they got a lot of property out front there. Could one of these pinwheels or ball fields be built on a site like that?
Yeah, the, yeah, Towne and Kramer Town has an agreement, much like we do with East Gaston and Forestview where they reserve those fields. It's, it's public play, but they, they have, have signed an agreement with Stewart Kramer High School.
Okay, be interesting to see, whether it's soccer fields or, you know, you got a lot of property there, it looks like it could be used for something. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. Again, thank you for a very thorough presentation, master plan. I, I would agree with Commissioner Keeger. The ADA issue is, is not something that we really get a choice in. It needs to be done. So I, I would work with, since he, Commissioner Keeger's on the Parks and Rec Board, if he wants to bring something up, maybe at the next agenda or some board session to, to vote on something like that, bring the cost forward. I, I think that's something I'm, I'd be willing to move on pretty quickly. Also, as far as the building, since I've been here, I know that that's been one of the issues, is, you know, what do we do with this building? I, I think that's something that I would be willing to move on pretty quickly to. It's something that has to be done. You can't really use the building. It's a hazard, in my opinion, and only that with the asbestos, so it's either now or never, I mean, you're going to have to do it, at some point, you're going to have to do something with the building and although I would like to do everything we can to preserve the historic nature of this building, I, I don't think the cost, I think the cost is so high, it's, it's going to prevent anything that needs to be done. So again, I'd say to Commissioner Keeger, if that's something, if you can get a price for that, bring that forward. If he would sponsor that, I'd be more than glad to sponsor that with him and just go ahead and move, you know, some of these issues along. Again, thank you for a very good detailed master plan. We trust the Parks and Recs Board. We do a, a lot of heavy lifting. Cotton Ginning Days was a success and joy coming out there every year. So just thank you for what you do.
Thank you, thanks.
Our next item is an athletic complex proposal by Commissioner Chad Brown. Commissioner Brown, yes?
Mr. Chairman, before we start, and this has nothing to do with him poking fun at me, but how much time is he allotted here? Is it 15 minutes?
He, he's allotted 15 minutes.
Okay, I just wanted to check.
And I'll make sure to hold him to that or gabble him out of order.
7:09.
I can promise you, we won't be here that long. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to my fellow board members, Parks and Rec Board. I want to come to you on behalf of Gaston County and the baseball situation that we've inquired lately about purchasing of land, putting, building complexes... inquired lately about purchasing of land, putting, building complexes, and making Gassing a mecca of baseball. I think we can do it a couple of different ways, and I just wanted to briefly go over something, to show you guys something that I think we could pull off, and the biggest thing would be pulling travel and tourism, Gassing County Parks and Recreation, the rest of the pieces of puzzle with Gassing County Schools. I think we all come together as one, everybody wins, Gassing County becomes, and I'll start the presentation as you start seeing it here. It goes through Gassing County Baseball, but if you could picture this, Tom, little Tom Keeger, a 14-year-old from New Jersey, a New York Yankee fan, dreams of one day hitting a homerun to defeat the Boston Red Sox. It's game seven, 3-2 is the count, with two outs, bottom of the ninth. Who wouldn't dream of this plan that you had to, to come and hit a homerun, or do something to go against your biggest rival? As you see, we start, this Tom gets ready to get into the batter's box, we start looking at this, and one size doesn't fit all, as Commissioner Price talked about when we were looking at the soccer fields or whatever. We have the issue with the gas lines out at Dallas Park, and all this goes back to Dallas Park as we started looking. And as you get into this, you can notice that there's four major league ballparks. All major league ballparks, none of them are symmetrical, so they all come into different pieces of the puzzle. But one of the things we could do to bring Gassing County in, is to name which parks we wanted to put at Dallas Park to use something to this field. We already talked about the renovations that they want to do, so why would we not want to upgrade this to make it to where it was a major league setting? It's not talking about the backstop, or any of the seating arrangements, it has to do with the fence only. So let's just go, and you think about it, as I'm left-handed, most of you guys are right-handed, the sheriff switch hits and does a lot, so he's pretty good at what, but all of a sudden, if you got in Tommy's situation, he's sitting there, he wants to win the game, if I'm left-handed, I want to have a chance to be able to hit one, maybe I hit it 290, and that's like Yankee Stadium, or trying to get at Boston Fenway Park, all these amenities that are sitting there. So it's something that has, it's not a one-size-fits-all type of accommodation. This is something that people will start remembering. So as we go through it, and you have so many decisions, like we talked about in Fenway Park, where Tommy's at, he's coming to bat here, he's got 390 down the right field line, and he's 305 down the left field line, but there's a three, there's 37-foot-high fence. So if you think about the Green Monster sitting in left field, little Tommy comes to bat with one mighty swing, little Tommy takes a mighty cut and it smashes a grand slam, the crowd roars, the Yankees win. This is every, this is every kid's dream. If you saw those kids here tonight, as they come to a park, it's all about one thing, it has to do with aesthetics. I hate to say this, but one of the things, when you pull into Dallas Park, you see the old county home, which is dilapidated. It's either gotta be upgraded, or it's gotta be moved to something that really changes the mecca, the way we look at things. As we look at the ballparks out there, they need to be one or the other. I look at something as astroturf with a 37-foot-high fence to where we can accommodate all people. So Tommy goes back to New Jersey the next day, and he's in New Jersey, little Tommy goes to school, tells his friends about the moment in time when he got to live his dream of hitting a homerun. Little Tommy hopes that all his little friends will want to come to be a part of Gassing County Baseball. Gassing County Baseball comes a long way in a lot of things that you do, and we already have a built-in system. We have baseball going on every day in Gassing County. So why would we not want to upgrade to try to get some of the accommodations that would make it favorable? We don't have to buy land, because it's already in land usage. We need to upgrade our Parks and Rec situation at Dallas Park, and that's something that we just talked about when Kathy did her presentation. As far as getting some of the financing and doing different things, there's a lot of ways to skin a cat, and I don't think anybody's ever brought anything forward that we could use to spend, spend money on that didn't cost a taxpayer a dime, and we still got an upgraded system. So there's a lot of different ways there. But where do we need to be? If you look at the picture on the left, as we're Gassing County, that is a picture of an astroturf complex. That's the one thing, if you want kids to come to your complex, there's nothing else around. Everybody's building complexes, but nobody's building one with all astroturf. It could accommodate soccer and lacrosse, different types of activities throughout, and that has the same four-field complex that you see out at, that Kathy had talked about in her presentation. But one of the things that we did was add some of the amenities that are just subtle to make Gassing County different. There was a half-diamond added, which is basically, there's a little field down in the corner by the lake that you could use to where people could come in. You could put a backdrop, which they would call a batter's eye. These are cheap, inexpensive ways to change the makeup and the makeup of what you see as you come into a park, but it all deals with aesthetics. It all deals with that, not that Prius that Commissioner Williams had talked about earlier. So as you look at the potential fields, we talked about when the presentation was given by Travel and Tourism before, there were 13 ballfields. Gassing County currently, you look at Dallas Park, if they were to potentially have four new fields. Gassing County Schools, I've talked to Jeff Booker about the plans of doing different things. It wasn't a go, but these are things that we could always talk about, because Gassing County Schools has some of the nicest 60-90 fields, but the one day, what everybody wants to do is get to that field where little Tommy just hit that grand slam over the Boston Green Monster to do different things. So you have Sims Park added in there with a partner of Gassing, with Gastonia Downtown, if that's where that comes. So you have a total of 14 fields. We have less than probably $5 million tied up. We could use some different languages to get some monies, but there's a lot of different ways that we can still get to that number. Travel and Tourism had a number put out there for heads and beds. 80% of our activity right now is already involving business clients throughout the week, so we have 20% that we can do. Last year, Harper Park brought in one tournament, which was 999 rooms in one week. With something like this here, with four fields, we can start doing different things. We have, all our overhead costs is cut down a lot, because we already have this plan in place to do some things, but why not play it safe? This gives us the blessings, when the commission did it before, to come forward, and we had some of the money, we had some money from Travel and Tourism that we maybe could use from the Whitewater Center to do different things. But I want to leave each commission with one saying, and if you can remember one thing that you'll remember tonight, I want you to remember this piece of it. And Tom, you just hit the homerun, so baseball players have a saying, you don't have to look to hit a homerun, they can feel it. I wish that for each one of you, that moment, a moment when you aim high, you hit your target, and you really get the bat on the ball and drive it into the upper deck, and you just feel it, just for a moment. When you aim high and hit your target, just for a moment, all else disappears, and you soar on the wings as eagles. It's a feeling too good, and you'll want to get it back. Today is a day that we can put Gassing County Sports back on the map. We can make it with little money and make it reality. People in Gassing County are looking for a sports complex, but people around the world and Gassing, in the United States are looking to see what Gassing County can do. So I want to let you guys know about plans that we can do to upgrade our park system and do different things. And I hope we could do this, not just with baseball, we could end up with soccer in some of our other places, but not just those particular sports, but any sport we have, and just trying to get together and push it together. I've asked Earl to, if he wanted to ask any questions about this, Earl was very integral in helping me do some things. I did spell Tom's name wrong again, on purpose, but our great clerk changed that, so sorry that it was too long for you, Tommy.
So you admit you did it on the shirts.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Earl can talk if anybody else has any questions or anything.
Let's see if we have any questions from the board. Commissioner Keeger?
Just, I just want you to clarify one thing, Chad. The, the fields you're talking about, up here in the little block, box, it says four major league ballparks. We're talking about four miniature replications of like Yankee Stadium.
This is not, this is not a miniature version. Only thing that's gonna be changed, now the actual facility would have, the fence would be the only thing that's different, and basically, let's say we had a chain-link fence, because we're looking at saving money, we don't have to have a...
The playing field would be identical.
The playing field would be 60-90, just the same as anything you see. So you may have one, you hit one 400 feet that you think you could hit a homerun, and somebody catches it. Or you may hit one 290 down the line, and you win a game. What that does is changing the person's activity to say, I hit a homerun, they don't think it's Yankee Stadium, they say I hit a homerun to win the game, and it changes, because if we're symmetrical, then all of a sudden, we're just like any place other place, so... I just wanted to put that together for you guys to see, and it wasn't anything to, to change for tonight of having a vote or anything, just wanted to put it out there for clarification.
I wanted to just make sure I was clear on that, that it would be a replica, and I guess the only thing I'll have to say is probably need to get the attorney to see if we're, if there are copyrights or patents, or are we able, are you able to duplicate something that somebody owns?
Who has, who has the copyrights on linear feet of measure? This is what, that's just 300 feet down the line, I can feel, we have fields right now that are just like them, so, I'm using as example, so I'd like to see, you know, we could fight that, I'm sure we'd have a good fight, but those, those are all things.
Steinbrenner's built the new Yankee Stadium, right?
Okay.
They own it. Can we copy it?
We're not, we're not in New York, we're not, I'm saying, but we're not gonna call it, and what we're gonna call it is Sundrop Field, or Caramont Field.
Well, I like the idea, I just...
And like I said, all I wanted to do was give you an idea of something that we were trying to do tonight. I think it upgrades our system, I think it's a way that we can pull everybody together, because right now, we have too much of one piece here or there. I want, I want to try to pull everybody together, so we can make it a cohesive unit, that we can all work together, and I think with Kathy and them's comprehensive plan they put together, this fits in, and I just wanted to put it out there for your food for thought.
I like it.
You just like, 'cause you got to hit a homerun. I really struck you out in the first one, but...
Commissioner Carpenter?
Okay, this is, this looks interesting, Chad, looked like you've done a lot of thought on it. The only part is, I played baseball, and I was on the other end, I was pitching, and I'd like to strike Tommy out.
Well, Commissioner Carpenter, if you'll look on that page that has those field, you'd probably want to play at that one that says Chase Field, 414 dead center, 335 down the lines. I don't think anybody's gonna hit one out of there, pretty much, but one of the things we can also bring with this, some of these larger fields encompass a lot of different things, which major softball, that are playing in major league stadiums now, so we could bring some of that. You could also bring, there's something called adult baseball. I was fortunate enough, when I was in my 30s, to play at 30 and over in Florida, and they play in all the spring training facilities, but these are nice facilities, we're not trying to compete with that. But it's something that you could have, adult league baseball, because like I said, right now, we're probably booking 33, 33 weekends a year that we could have baseball, and we probably push it to the limit to get more, but those are all things that I think we could do, and we could fill the gaps with soccer, or something that we did in a different time.
Okay, and your presentation is that we would have the Dallas Park and some of the school sites with others or other property?
I had brought before the board, probably, I think it was last year, when we sat down with the school system, myself and Commissioner Price, sat down with the school system about trying to get the school systems involved with these particular facilities. And basically, the school system that I asked for with Superintendent Booker was only 10-week period, and that's basically when the schools are out of school, that they would turn that over to basically Parks and Rec to say, hey, if you get a facility that comes in here, and we have the, we need all 14 fields, which is probably gonna be, if, the most, two weekends, I would say, at that. The other fields would, you know, they could pick and choose how they wanted to use those fields, and have some type of say. But I did ask Superintendent Booker to look into this, to see what we were, Mr. Mathers had spoken with him as well, but like I said, it wasn't something that we put into place to say, this is what's gonna happen. It was, basically, the schools would win. The schools would take over and get all the revenue that was streamed, other than the gate proceeds. They would get the rental of the field, they would get the site director's fee of whoever they chose, whether it be the high school coach or someone on their staff first, before it went to a job opening in Gassing County. They would also get concessions, which, and if the booster clubs took these in, it's already a successful program right now, some of the high schools we have, I'll give you a good example, Forestview works great with Kathy in doing some of the things. I don't think they've ever had to buy a uniform that they've had to raise money for, because they do these things in part with these leagues that come in on the weekends, when they're not doing anything, and basically, they get paid to be there, but they're also getting a donation from whoever the directors are, whichever league vendor is playing there. They also get the concessions, plus they get the field rental that the school system sets up. I think those are some of the big issues that are up, out there, was tearing up of the fields. Well, the fields are probably torn up, and I know Commissioner Fraley would, you know, Chervil may be off limits, because they have Legion baseball. South Point may be off, because they have Legion, that, they, pretty much year-round, those are the only two really fields that are used. So they may be saying, hey, we can use them, but if we're gonna use them for Legion, off limits, you know, so to speak. But like I said, it's not that they could rotate it around to limit the wear and tear that would happen on a field. I think that we, we have what we need, but if we made something so nice and aesthetically pleasing, I could use an example that I always use when I tell people, pick a restaurant in Gassing County, you think about the CDA. If you brought somebody in off of the airport, and you went to the CDA for breakfast, the old CDA, somebody's gonna tell you they don't want to go in there until you, you get one shot. You get one shot, and if you took somebody in there, they saw the portion size and how good the servings were, that, what you got, that's the chance you have to, where we could do this. We make it aesthetically pleasing, we bring people here, we make it the right way. Kathy and them do a great job right now of trying to get these tournaments, so I think it's something.
Yeah, I took that to be 15 minutes.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Now, these others might have a question.
Commissioner Fraley?
I just want to say, you did great on the proposal. I really liked the idea, of course, you and I have talked about it a little bit before, and I hope we can move forward. And you are suggesting that you can incorporate these fields that you are talking about into the master plan at the park, in place of what they kind of...
That is correct, and there's some, Ms. Hart had had some numbers in the back, where it was an à la carte. I have been working with Kathy on a lot of things with that, and I asked her to put an à la carte price list together. It wasn't something, but some of the things you can think about. We may can use some of the existing fencing for sidelines of the fields, or something that, you know, or maybe for a soccer field, or something that we use totally different. The lighting system at Dallas Park has just been upgraded, so that may be something we can use existing, that we don't have to put in to the plan. But one of the things I would suggest, as anything, if you make it turf, speaking from baseball, 42 years of playing every day for my life, you put something like that on something that people will want to come and play.
I really liked the idea. I hope we can move forward and possibly incorporate, you know, travel and tourism, too, talk to them, and maybe get everybody on board in a way to use some land that we already own, and save a lot of money, and have a first-class facility. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Commissioner Fraley. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Brown, good job, I think it's very creative, innovative way to look at things. I like the way if I'm at the, you know, the Fenway Park, if I'm a right-hander like little Tommy, or if I'm at Yankee Stadium, and I'm a right-hander like, you know, the Chad Brown, or if I'm like the sheriff, and I'll go, either way, it don't matter to me, you know, which, which field it is, if I'm a switch hitter.
I don't think so.
I think, I think it's very good, very creative. I think the only, the only question I've got for you is, what's the next step? So, I mean, you gotta, you've got an idea here, where do we go from here?
I think that's where the manager comes involved in doing some things. He has some creative thinking through a lot of different ways. I know that there is some money that we talked about with travel and tourism out there. I think some of the numbers got skewed in what the paper said today, there's also some money that will be coming back to the county. But I think some of the things, and I'm not asking to use, I, I would just try to think of the creative ways that we could find it. The creative plan that they've already put together, I think is a big, is something big for Gassing County to, to push forward, so I think that's something that the manager may be better to suit, talking about with also with, you know, the six of you, to come up with something that's creative. But if you ask me, I'd say, you know, we have Whitewater money, that, you know, we've made our last payment, or we have the money that they were gonna put on the land. I'm not asking to use that money, I'm just using different examples to where we don't cripple them all at one time, to say, hey, we can use this money, or maybe there's some revenue structures that we can change with the way it's pay-for-play type of thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Any other questions? Any other comments? Commissioner, I mean, Earl, you have a couple of comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have just a couple of very brief comments, but, just 15 minutes, right?
That was dinner, by the way.
No, there, you know, I, I'm supportive of Commissioner Brown's plan for a number of reasons. I think it's realistic, you know, the cost is potentially manageable. I believe there are some opportunities that we could explore for, for funding something[1765.71] of this magnitude, which is obviously much more within reach than, than some other plans that we've, we've considered. And, you know, another aspect of this that I like is, we could probably phase it. It could be some done, you know, on a pay-as-you-go basis, so that we could manage the cost over a period of time. And I certainly like the idea of being able to improve an existing county asset. You know, we have a number of park facilities around the county that, quite frankly, have been drastically underfunded in the recent past, because of the budgetary pressures we've, we have had. And this might be an opportunity for us to improve that situation. So, to me, it's a win-win opportunity, and it's one that we could consider, and I could, I would be more than happy to explore some possibilities for funding this. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'll just say, Commissioner Brown, I do think it's outside the box. I think you bring some ideas that we definitely need to talk about and look at, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
At this, at this time, are there any other matters before the board? Hearing none, this concludes our work session for tonight. The special county commission meeting will convene shortly. I'd like to thank you for watching. If you have questions or comments, please telephone our clerk, Donna Buff, at 704-866-3196, and share them. At this time, I'll call our special meeting to order. Our invocation will be delivered by Commissioner Keger, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Keger.
Thank you. Please join me. Lord, thank you for letting us assemble here tonight, and do the work that we've accomplished so far. Please let us continue with the next meeting, to use the wisdom that you've granted us, to make good and proper decisions for the folks of this county. Please watch over all our residents, all our military folks around the world, and please help us deal properly with this Ebola crisis, and... And that'll about do it. Amen.
.........................................................
Well, I was gonna keep going, I said, nah, it's late.
Thank you, gentlemen. Our first item is a Caramont Health Board of Directors appointment. Is the Chief of Staff...
Yes, well, I'll do that in a motion.
Okay. This time, what I'll do is, I will defer to Commissioner Williams. He is on the hospital board, if you want to make the motion, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll do it all as one motion. Nominate Chief of Staff Ward Adcock, and for the at-large appointments, Chris Peak, Pearl Burris Floyd, and Chris Howell.
Motion made by Commissioner Williams, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Commissioner Keger.
I'd like to bring up one thing. I talked to one of the commissioners in the dinner hour, and I just wanted, I don't know, I don't know this person, I've never met him, as far as I know, David Paceauer. His credentials are unbelievable, if you look at it. Corporate risk development, executing audit strategy, mitigate identified risks, oversight. He's a public accountant, CPA, fraud examiner. And I believe he's in, is he the county assistant manager? In Mecklenburg County?
No, David.
No, okay. But gosh, this guy's credentials are unreal, and I'm not saying anything about anybody else, but...
I can tell you a little bit. David is a personal friend of mine.
Okay.
And you're right, there's nothing, he's, he's a great individual, has a good resume, and he is, is, would be a very good board member. There is a concern on the board, and Mr. Williams can speak to this also, about independent board members and non-independent board members, such that if you had a spouse or a family member that was employed, you would be non-independent consideration, because a decision you made may affect that individual and your family.
Jason, was this the one you were mentioning to me?
Yeah.
Is this the individual?
Yeah, Commissioner Keger, I don't remember the exact conversation we're talking about. I can tell you that Mr. Paceauer, I've never met him. The people that didn't meet him on our committee was, were very impressed with him. His resume, as you said, is off the charts. If he doesn't get appointed tonight, I would be surprised if he's not considered again. Very impressive person, so... Okay. Thank you.
Good gentleman, we have a motion. Any other discussion? We have a motion on, excuse me. We have a motion on the table, and has been seconded by Commissioner Price. No more discussion, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. There are no other items before the board at this time. At this time, I'll accept a motion to go into closed session.
Yes, sir.
First, a motion made by Commissioner Keger, seconded by Commissioner Brown. The motion is to enter closed session, pursue it to North Carolina General Statute 143-318-1185, to establish or instruct your staff concerning the negotiation of the pricing terms of contract concerning the acquisition of real property located at 1491 Business Park Court, Gaston. Are there any discussions? All in favor? We are now in closed session. At this time, I'll accept a motion to enter open session.
Agreed.
There was no action taken. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. At this time, are there...